Sorry about that. It was me. Thanks for asking. It was. All right, everybody. It is 5 o'clock and we are going to start our Committee of the Whole. All council members are here. And we can start out with Committee of the Whole minutes from April 19th, 2022. Are there any corrections, concerns with those? If not, I'll take a motion to approve.
I will move to approve the Committee of the Whole minutes of April 19th, 2022.
My second.
Thank you, Gary. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Any opposed? I think I heard everyone. All right. Great. So we will dive into our discussion items this evening, and I'm very excited. We have Laverne Snow here coming to talk to us about South Salt Lake Valley Mosquito Abatement District. And if you want to come on up, we would love to hear from you. Thanks for being here today. That's great. Nice to meet you, Dan. Thanks for being here. Fantastic. And you're welcome to join her up there, whatever works for you guys. Okay. I didn't want to encourage anything that was not what needed to be happening.
For the record, I'm Laverne Snow, and I'm going to be joined by Dan McBride, who is our Assistant Manager at the South Salt Lake Valley Mosquito Abatement District. That's a mouthful. And he's also the Education Director. And I have to tell you, it's fine. I have to tell you, I'm really honored, and it's a pleasure to serve, represent you and Murray on this, on this board. It's a really good opportunity for me to, it's a really good opportunity for me to mix my public administration and my public health training in something that's very practical and very, hopefully not day-to-day, but could be day-to-day. And so I've really enjoyed my tenure on this board. The board's had a lot of changes in that time. We built a new building, and I'm really proud to say we raised taxes. And Dan will go over this a little bit more. We raised taxes and we immediately lowered them after we paid off the loan to a lower rate than they were. How often you see government agencies lower their taxes? Well, we're pretty proud of that. I think we have a really efficient staff. It's small. We have a very large board. We represent all of Salt Lake County, except Salt Lake City has its own district, and Magna has its own district. So we have lots of board members. And they're conservative, and they're very careful about people's health and use of pesticides. And it's, it's really a pleasure to be doing something where, that I believe my service is helping improve public health. So Dan's going to come up and tell a little bit about what we do, and how we do it, and some specifics about our community in Murray. And I would very much encourage you to ask questions of us. And also, if at any point you have a concern or a question or an issue about mosquito abatement, I would strongly encourage you to call me, and I'll work with you to get it resolved. And I'm, I'm sure that that's never going to be a problem. We'll be able to take care of it right away because we do have such good staff.
Thank you, Dan.
Of course. Thank you, Laverne. I, I am also going to just echo Laverne in saying, thank you to the Murray City Council for letting us come and talk. We, we are kind of a unique little district out there. We, we do something unique. We are a public health sector kind of division district. And so being able to come and actually talk to the municipalities that we cover is always a very welcome thing. I do have to just put Laverne kind of on the spot and just say that Laverne is thorough. Laverne is dedicated. Laverne is knowledgeable. And I, I am not joking when I say without Laverne, we would not be as well-run district because Laverne really is all that it's cracked up to be. So thank you, Laverne, for setting this up so we could come. I just want to go quickly with an overview. We're going to go over our mission statement. I always like to start with a mission statement because it gives a really good synopsis of who we are and kind of where our ideals lie. We'll go into what I call Integrated Pest Management. That's how we actually do the control of mosquitoes here. It's kind of a, a really kind of neat way. Gone are the days of the old fogger trucks that run up and down the streets spraying organophosphates willy-nilly. And so I wanted to kind of go over how and what we do. We'll talk about, a little bit about habitat, specifically the habitat that we find here in Murray City. And then I, I do just love actually breaking out the very specific things that we do with Murray. So starting off, our mission statement, "To serve the public by minimizing mosquito nuisance and disease with a priority of safety, ecological stewardship, and cost efficiency." As Laverne just said, we, we are very, very proud of our fiscal responsibility, especially with the, the funds that we get. We are, we are funded primarily by property tax. We take that very, very seriously. The board takes it very, very seriously as well. With our staff and board, we don't have a whole lot of us. There's only five time, five full-time employees. And then we have roughly about 20 seasonals that come on during the heavy mosquito months from about April to kind of the first of October. You can see there's a district Assistant Manager. We have a full-time biologist, who is just a crack wizard when it comes to mosquito biology. We have a GIS specialist. We have a fleet supervisor. And then, as Laverne said, we, we have to kind of just talk about our board. We are governed by a very large board in, especially when we compare it to other boards throughout Salt Lake County. We have 18 active board members from a good number of municipalities you can see on there. We actually have 22 individual areas that we cover. And so we can actually have up to 22 board members. There are a few municipalities that haven't sent board members. But we are, we are quite large. Tax rate history. Once again, we are very proud of this. The last time we ever raised taxes was back in 2010. Now, that was when we were building our new building. We raised them up. The building was built. We paid off our building. And within just a couple of years, two years later, we dropped it back down again, and we haven't raised them since. Now, is that always going to be the case? Probably not. We will eventually probably have to raise taxes. And the way that we raise taxes with a board-run system like ours is, is we have to have a certain amount of elected officials on our board, and they'll in turn kind of go to their city councils, and we'll get approval there. But for right now, we have been running on the same tax rate, a very, very low tax rate of .00002. When I had to actually look that up, I would have gotten it wrong. You can see that that's actually about 1/20 of what we could charge. And, you know, it's, it's something that we're very proud of. You know, we, we really, really, really try to do the maximum with the minimum that we get. All right. Let's go into the actual nitty-gritty of what we are doing. Let's just introduce Integrated Pest Management. Integrated Pest Management is a scientific approach to controlling pests within a geographical area. It is, it is very based on building knowledge. It's very based on, on good scientific practice, good ecological practice, good environmentalism, and different kind of aspects like that. To kind of start off with, I want to talk about mosquito types. Believe it or not, there is about 23 individual species of mosquito all throughout Salt Lake County. Now, of those species of mosquito, there's actually only two of them that carry West Nile virus. The unfortunate part of that is they have to, happen to be two of the greatest populace of mosquitoes that we have here, the Culex pippian and Culex tarsalis. Those are the primary things that we're targeting, is those two kind of disease carriers. All mosquitoes have some varying degree and ability to carry disease. What we see here in Salt Lake is the kind of disease that we have here is only primarily passed along by these two kinds of mosquitoes. But, and this is kind of the really important, kind of almost scary fact, mosquitoes are also incredibly, incredibly adaptive. They adapt faster than pretty much any single animal out there. And that is scientific fact. We actually have seen in the past 10 years some very scary kinds of mosquitoes. You won't recognize the name if I say them, but well, you will recognize the diseases: Zika, dungue fever, yellow fever. And what we've seen is these mosquitoes that carry those kind of diseases are coming at us. As a matter of fact, just last year in Moab and in St. George, we started picking up the kind of mosquitoes that actually carry those diseases. It is just a matter of time because of ecological situations and because of just the natural ability, ability of the mosquito to adapt, that those things are going to come into Salt Lake County. The nice thing is, is we do a lot of population tracking. Weekly, we use a ton of different mosquito traps, 60 to be precise. We do 17 gravid traps. A gravid trap is just a trap of kind of dirty, nasty, mucky water that mosquitoes like to lay their eggs in. We have what are called the CO2 traps. Mosquitoes are primarily attracted to you because of how you breathe. You know, the heavier that you breathe, the more mosquitoes are going to come at you. We realized that. We built these traps to actually output CO2. And then we have kind of these really fancy scientific new traps called BGSs, which are kind of just a combination of everything that we could throw at a mosquito. You can see that we do several of those traps right in the middle of Murray. A lot of them are along the river bottom, or they're at Wheeler Farm. We've got one at Wheeler Farm. We also have some that we set up right here, right near the city council building. It's just a way that we can track the population. This is what they look like out in the field. The one on the left is the CO2 trap that is hanging in the tree. The one on the right is a gravid trap. Adult mosquitoes are sorted by species. Our biologists and a couple of the seasonal workers that we normally take from different colleges around kind of the area will go, we have a working lab. They'll take each one of the individual mosquitoes. They'll separate them out. They'll kind of quarantine the ones that could carry diseases. And from there, we can actually run different kind of identification tests. Let's go a little bit more forward. I do have to say, my biologist is a pretty amazing. We have one of the most complete mosquito species specimen trays out there. If anybody ever really wanted to come and look at mosquitoes carefully, and I don't know exactly why you would, but shoot, if you want to, come on over. We'll pop it out for you. Okay. We do test for diseases in-house. We utilize a PCR multiplex test. PCR testing, I'm sure everybody in here is at least familiar with the name PCR. PCR testing is what we use. We break down the mosquitoes into these little tiny vials. We throw them into a machine. That's what the machine looks like right there. I, I had updated the pictures before I sent this, so I apologize. We actually had a little bit better of a picture on there. But what it is, is that little red box right there. We put a bunch of little vials in there. It spins at such an incredibly heavy rate that the virus actually sheds from the bodies of the mosquitoes. And then that machine will actually look at the virus. It will amplify the virus, and it will give us kind of information about that virus. We test for three different diseases. West Nile virus, as you can see right there, and then St. Louis encephalitis and Western equine encephalitis. We are very grateful that we really don't see those last two. Those are some pretty scary, pretty dangerous diseases that affect some parts of the U.S. We run this test because the mosquitoes we have can carry it. They just haven't yet. They do carry West Nile. We do get West Nile cases almost every single year. We are tracking that population consistently. Let's talk about habitat. Whenever I talk about mosquito habitat, these are kind of the pictures that pop up. You know, people think of the large marsh areas. People are thinking about, you know, the parks that are flooded by water. There are more habitats than that. Small habitats, even up to horse troughs and even the catch basins along the side of the road. My crew, and what we do, and we'll kind of go through there, is we actually will go out and we will target a specific kind of habitat. And that team will go into that habitat, and they will do control measures. Now, whenever I say control measures, the very first thing that I think people think about is that we're just dumping pesticide everywhere. And that's actually not the case. We do a lot of biological control. You can see there, that picture on the right, those fish. That is called the Gambuchia athenus, or the mosquito fish. We actually put those right into people's backyard ponds. They like to snack on the mosquito larvae. It's a great way to protect. They're kind of fun. The kids love feeding them. They're just kind of a great thing. And the nice thing is, you already paid for it if you paid your taxes. So if you want them, come and get them. We also do a lot of what we call environmental control. Environmental control kind of consists of either making water flow, because mosquitoes hate flowing water, booing up ditches and canals, or even just going out and talking to people. Going into a farmer's yard and maybe helping him with some of his water practices, maybe trying to find a good time to decrease the water. You know, different things like that are environmental control. The last thing we do is the chemical control. And we really, really try not to do as much unless it is needed. And a lot of times, it is needed. The last thing that we like to do is education. That's why I'm here. I like educating people. I like talking to city councils. I like talking to school-aged kids. I like talking to anybody that will have an open ear about mosquitoes. They probably get just annoyed with me, but I love it. I love it.
Now, I know, I can't remember if it's here, or not here, but like in Florida or somewhere where they're doing like genetic altering to mosquitoes. Is that something we're looking into?
Absolutely. Yeah. We, we are constantly looking into different kind of control measures. So genetically modified mosquitoes is an up-and-coming technology that is actually showing some really, really big promise. Pretty much what it does is they capture or breed a whole bunch of male mosquitoes, and they just make them sterile. And those mosquitoes are released. And a lot of times, at least with some species of mosquitoes, it's kind of one breed cycle and you're done. And so if you have a sterile mosquito that goes and breeds with a female, you don't have any problems. You don't have any offspring. It is something we're looking at. We're also looking at just simple things like microwaving the mosquitoes. That's kind of a funny, weird, new technology that's approaching, but it's kind of working on the same premise. It's just a way to kind of make it so they can't procreate. So yeah, we are constantly looking at those kind of things. I was actually at a meeting in Florida a couple of months ago where they were doing big presentations. And, and we, we're kind of still trying to figure out a way that we can do it here. Okay. Oh, we're going the opposite direction. Let's try that again. Okay. You can kind of see some of my other crews and what they do. We do a lot with catch basins along the side of the road. You see that biker? If you ever see someone who's just violently orange, driving along the side of the road, throwing things down in the catch basins, please do not call the police on us. It's just us. We're trying to prevent the mosquitoes. A lot of the mosquitoes that carry diseases actually breed right in catch basins along the side of the road. So it's one of our, one of actually our biggest teams that are out there and one of our biggest control measures. Murray City Breakdown. I love this slide. About one of my favorites. So last year, we had 10 service requests from citizens. So citizens from Murray would call us in. We would go out. We would set up a trap. We would try to figure out why they were seeing mosquitoes. 14 areas along the river creeks and canals where we checked for another kind of insect called black fly. If anybody has ever come near the river and had little flies fly in your eyes, we actually do some control measures for those too. We inspect about 19, or 15 horse areas and their troughs. So any citizen who has a horse trough within Murray, we try to get information out to them so that they're able to, you know, have a better control. Horse troughs are a big producer of mosquitoes. We have 19 tree hole mosquitoes. Now, for those who are unfamiliar with the tree holes, and that's pretty much everybody, the tree hole mosquito is actually a vector of dog heartworm. So we actually have people out that are climbing the trees, looking for the mosquitoes to try to prevent your pets from being sick. We inspect about 150 individual mosquito spots a week. So I have technicians that are in trucks that are running all over the place with Murray. We're contacting Murray Public Works. We're going into Wheeler Farm. We're going into people's backyards, inspecting just to make sure that we don't have any larvae that are present. We have about 205 citizens who utilize our fish programs. So 205 Murray citizens have our Gambuchia fish in their backyard. And we do do presentations in elementary schools. Murray City and the Murray education system is a big partner that we have. We actually go to fourth and fifth grade classes where we develop a full, entire curriculum. And we get to come in, we talk about biology. We're part of, we're part of kind of the, the push for STEM. So we talk a lot about biology. We talk about chemistry. We try to get kids excited about science. And then that gigantic number at the bottom, we inspect 5,202 catch basins within Murray City. And we do that actually three times throughout April and October. So about 15,000 inspections. That's what we do. That's mosquito abatement. It's kind of the 10,000-foot view. I wanted to leave enough time so that if you had questions, you could feel free to ask.
You mentioned the 10 service requests from citizens. So any citizen can call you all and say,
Absolutely.
I think I have mosquitoes. Can you set up a trap?
Absolutely. Yeah. As a matter of fact,
I will be calling you all.
Please do.
Because I got bit while I was out doing yard work.
We actually, so I, I've actually prepared some documents that I will give to your people that you can actually have our card and everything. It's found on our website, and we highly, highly encourage people to call us. Number one, obviously, it's a nuisance factor. But number two, we don't want people getting sick. And a lot of times, if we start to see mosquitoes in one area, we can do proactive kind of things in that area so that we can stop the disease.
I was just curious. With your, where is it? The fish program in the backyard ponds?
Sure.
Do you have like a number that I could call?
Hundred percent.
Okay.
Sure. As a matter of fact, yeah, I'll actually have Laverne hand out the thing so we have them here. But we have, I, I brought a business card. I brought a couple pamphlets for the council. The other thing that we're going to do is I'm going to contact Murray City and see if we can get it on your local newspaper so that they can have that information there too. But yeah, absolutely. Please utilize us. We, we're here and we, we love it.
Just one quick question comment, I guess. I've seen your, your people at the Murray Canal Trail. So the, the little flies that kind of hang on the trail, are the, is that the black fly?
It could be. We have a lot of different flies here in the county. The black flies specifically are ones that are very, what we call ocular irritating. So they'll actually literally fly into your eyes and buzz in your eyes. The other ones that are on the canal, which I assume it probably could be, there's another one out there that's called a Karenamed. They're the ones that you just see that are swarming all over the place. They're completely harmless. They don't bite. A lot of people will think they're mosquitoes, but luckily for us, they're not. Because if they were, my job would be much more difficult.
Yeah, I would bet that's what they are.
Absolutely.
So anyway, yeah. So I've seen those guys taking samples of the water and stuff.
Good, good. That means my guys are working, and we're always thankful for that.
Yep. Me too. Thanks.
Do you have another question?
What's the breed you're watching out for? Like, what's your big, what keeps you up at night in the world of mosquitoes? Is it the one that, it almost has like an Aegypti looking? It's a little black one, right?
That is exactly. It's called the 80s Egyptai. And the 80s Egyptai is one that is literally coming up the coast of California right now. And it is one that can carry a lot of really, really scary diseases. We've already had some dungue disease outbreaks in Florida and kind of along the coast. We've seen Zika virus kind of make, oh, thank you so much. We've seen Zika virus rear its ugly head a couple of times. And that one mosquito is the thing that I pray every single time I put a trap out that I don't see come back. Because if it is, we would, we would have to be very aggressive in trying to get rid of it.
And we haven't seen any yet.
No, not up here. Thank goodness.
No.
Yep. Yep. The other one actually that I, I do kind of keeps me up at night that we do have is the Anopheles freborni. It is a mosquito that can carry malaria that we have right now. Now, we eradicated malaria many, many, many years ago, and we're thankful for that. But,
That's always coming back.
Exactly.
That's the trick.
It's kind of, it's the, it's the worry.
So we need to finish up, but I have to ask you one more question before we go. And so we're going to be in, you know, we're in a drought. It's going to be really hot this summer. My kids want the waiting pool. How many days can I leave the water in there before I'm part of the problem?
I, I like to give people a week and a half.
A whole week and a half?
A whole week and a half.
That is such better news than I thought.
Yes. Mosquitoes, for, for the most part, really like nasty water. So as long as you don't, you know, as long as your kids are at least semi-clean going into the pool, you should be fine.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Of course. Thank you.
Educational, terrifying, incredible. Thank you so much for your work on the board and for the education. We really appreciate you.
Of course. And thank you, Council, for letting me come.
Absolutely. And we need to head over to moderate income housing. And we've got Zach and Jared. Excited to hear about it.
Just a sec to prep. Come on, make noises. Yes. Okay. Hi, guys. Thanks for having me tonight. I actually wanted to start off with, this whole thing is starting because we're trying to be proactive, like Ms. Turner said in, in the RDA meeting. We're, we're trying to be proactive as our approach to this. And so this is going to be the first of a lot of Committee of the Whole discussion items going forward with modern income housing. I plan to probably be on the next Committee of the Whole for probably the next month or two. So it'll, it'll be fun. So why are we here today? So the state of Utah mandates that municipalities plan for and address moderate income housing. As part of the 2022 legislative session, you guys kind of got a little bit of a rundown on it when, when you guys talked about that recently. We have to do an update to our modern income housing element. It has to be adopted and sent to the state by October 1st, 2022. We'll get into what that entails at our next, our next discussion. Largely, today, we're going to be talking about what we currently have in our general plan. So brief history of moderate income housing. 1996 is when the state mandated that every municipality, for the most part, needed to have a modern income housing element as part of their general plans. In 2000, let's see, in 2002? Oh, it was originally addressed in the 2003 general plan. We did have a moderate income housing element there. I didn't get too deep into that because that's just far, far and away. So in 2017, we adopted a fully revamped general plan with a modern income housing element, which is what you guys have today. In 2019, the state legislature adopted Senate Bill 34. This required cities to select from a menu of items. I believe there were 26 at the time. And we had to adopt four of those items to address modern income housing. So I don't know how many of you were still, were here in 2019. I forget. I apologize. But you would have recalled us adopting another element in that general plan. So yeah, October 2019, we, we drafted another item into there to add an additional strategy. So then in 2022, the legislature adopted House Bill 462. The TLDR on that, like I said, is we have to have a new one adopted by October 1st and sent over to the state. So a question we get asked a lot is, what is moderate income housing? That is, according to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, which is HUD, it's defined as housing occupied or reserved for occupancy by households with a gross household income equal to or less than 80% of the median gross income for households of the same size in the county in which the city is located. So,
Zach?
Yeah.
Can you quantify that?
Of course. Yes. And I will get to that in this slide. So, so in the general, in, in the general plan that we have currently, so I pulled three different numbers. So the HUD, Housing and Urban Development, provides this pretty much yearly. what the, uh, area median income is for each, uh, county. So, uh, in 2002, which was part of the 2003 general plan, uh, the AMI was 57,200. In our currently adopted plan, it was 68,700. And as of fiscal year 2022, it's 102,400. So, uh, just to give you some basic numbers on that. So from the 2002 to the 2022, um, area median incomes, that's an increase of about 79%. And from the 2014 to the 2022, that's about an increase of 49%. So, um, we'll, we'll get into some of this a little bit later, uh, but it, it's, it's kind of, it doesn't, it gels a little bit, but I think there's some discrepancies there. I think there's a wide berth of, I don't have the breakdown of obviously what everybody makes. So I can't see what those outliers are. The median is supposed to solve for that, but I think we still have some issues there too. So getting into the area median incomes, so I'm now going to focus only on 2022. So if this is all based on a family of four, so, um, $81,920 for a family of four. If you have two full-time working adults, that equates to about $19.69 per hour. Would be required to just meet that 80% threshold. 51,000 is our 50% AMI. That's considered low income. And, um, again, same thing, two full-time working adults at $12.31 an hour. And then 30%, which is considered, uh, very low income would be $7.38, which is just a few cents more than median weight. Wow. Median, oh my gosh, I can't say. I have been dealing with median numbers a lot, so minimum wage. So, uh, what can people afford for that? So, um, in the previous general plan, um, and I kind of spoke to Brenda today on the phone, uh, we're going to include $250 for utilities on average. So the top number here is your monthly allowance, including your utilities. So $2,048 a month for 80%, uh, 1,280 for 50, $768 for 30%. Obviously you take out $250 for each of those and those are your minimum rents that, that's required. There, that's better. Um, again, based on a family of four. Uh, I don't want to get too far into the weeds on this one, but I did pull a couple apartments, um, just, just their, rental rates for a one bedroom, uh, Burke Hill, which has, uh, low income housing tax credits, does have, um, a one bedroom available for $439, um, per month. However, just down the street at Metro Fire Clay, which is market rate, um, it runs anywhere from 1387 to 1502. So you are pretty much, um, locking out the 50% and 30% um, just flat out. So, um,
Zach?
Yeah, go ahead.
That's only a one bedroom.
That is. Yeah. And this is all based on a family.
How are you going to fit four people in a one bed?
That's a great question. That's, that's why we're, that's why the state has kind of laid down these mandates. This is, this is part of what we're having to deal with is how, how do we make this, um, available for people? So, um,
I don't want to stop you.
No, please.
Do you remember the Utah housing money? Mayor, help me remember this back in 1970-ish? No, it was when we, when I first bought my house, there was called Utah money, Utah money, housing money. You, do you think they'll ever do something like that? Because a lot of my friends got on it and we couldn't, but
Yeah.
My, it's, I know it's beyond what we're talking about right now, but I'm just curious about that.
So I have no knowledge of that whatsoever. Um, I know that, um, there's the, uh, just the tax credits that you can get through the federal government. Uh, there is the Olean Walker, um, housing fund. I don't entirely know what they spend their monies on. Um, that, do you, do you know?
Yeah, there, there are various.
So there are various programs to help with down payment assistance and with rental assistance and things like that. But they're, the, the, the point right now is that none of those are even with, it's a numbers game. There are so many people now in the 80% in the 80% category, let's say 80% and down. And that's a family of four and you're looking at these numbers. Everybody can't be on those programs. They were not designed to give rental assistance or down payment assistance to 85% of the population. The market is not creating, the markets, the market alone is creating approximately zero affordable units. So everything that's affordable has, has some sort of subsidy, but there's just not enough of that to go around.
It's called Utah Housing Assistance.
Okay. Yeah. No, I, I haven't heard of it. Um, I don't think it exists, um, in its current form anyway. It may have transformed into the Olean Walker Housing Fund. It, um, I'm not sure, but we can definitely look into that. So, um, so now we'll get into, so now you get, kind of get an idea of what people can afford to pay. Also, let me take this into consideration too. I forgot to mention this. All these numbers are based on 30% of your annual income. That's where you are, um, not cost burdened by housing. Anything above spending 30% of your income, you're considered, um, pretty much house poor. That you're spending your, your way more money on your house than you, you, a lot of times you have to cut other things that you'd be doing. A lot of times that's savings, um, paying off credit card bills, things like that in order to, to do that. So what we'll get into now is, so these are numbers that I've been slowly updating. Uh, these are not the current, what's adopted. I've been slowly updating these numbers as we go. So the next one I want to kind of talk about is the single-family residential unit values. So in the, um, 2017 general plan, you can kind of see pretty good, uh, pretty good layout here. You know, anywhere from less than a hundred thousand dollars up to $700,000 plus. So in this area, about fit, that's about where 50% of the home ranges are, um, when this plan was adopted. So I, uh, worked on this all day yesterday to, to, um, so, um, I kept this at the same scale for ease of you, for ease of read. I didn't want to shift anything. But i- in all honesty, if I were to redo this with something more manageable, I would probably bring that 500,000 because there's a giant spike in 500 to 599,000. I would probably bring that back down, kind of shift the 100,000 to 200,000. Unfortunately, you, you just don't have that much housing. Also to bring that in, this is now where about 50% of the housing is located. It, it, it's not, it, it's, it's narrowed, so, um, less, um, what am I looking? Less of a range, um, in that area. Of course. Which one? Uh, 2017. Yeah. Yep. So, yes, it, it's very insane. Um, and this is all based off of, th- this data here, um, is current as of April 22nd. I will caveat that as well as this is Salt Lake County market value data. That's not necessarily what houses are selling for. This is, this is kind of on the lower end of that.
Always on the lower.
Yeah. Yeah. The, the, the assessors usually do that a little bit lower. So you could probably move this over a little bit more. But yeah, less than, less than 1% um, is less than a hundred thousand dollars at this point. And this does include condo units. So any condos, any, um, PUD developments. Um, and that included them in both. So, uh, you can see where those shifted there. So, um, I did this one pretty quickly. This was another gra- another, uh, table that was done in, um, the current general plan. I just mimic this with the latest numbers. So you can see that somebody making, and honestly, I, I questioned it. I just followed exactly what the, what the 2017 plan had. I don't think we're going to see a 4% mortgage anytime soon. We're probably going to get into the fives, is sixes, sevens. When I Googled just mortgage rate calculator, um, with a credit score of 700, you were looking at a 6.8. It just populated a 6.8 credit or mortgage. So these could be skewed.
Zach?
Yeah.
When that happens, do you see the price of housing, houses going down, the price of a house going down with the mortgage going up?
Um, I would anticipate probably not. Um, I don't have anything to strongly back that up. Yeah. But I, I can't really speak to that, but the market that we're in right now, where demand is so high in this valley, um, I don't know. I know that it's taking a little bit longer to sell property, um, but I don't know if that's reducing.
A little bit longer as in, as in 14 days instead of seven.
Four, fourteen days.
Longer. Well, and I think I've had a little bit of discussion with some people in this area. And I think what they're, the original belief was that as mortgage rates climb, housing values come down because you can buy less house.
Right.
However, that's not the case here in Utah because we're buffered. I, the mountains are figurative and ain't real in the sense that we have a influx of people with tons of cash coming from other states. So they sold a multimillion dollar home in another place. They can come here and put that down on the house, no problem. They don't care what the appraisal is at that point. They'll just pay what they need to pay to get into a home. So we're not expected to see that same thing.
Yeah, that, that's definitely, uh, uh, an issue there. So that's the data side of this. So, um, of, of where I'm at right now. Let's see. So what does our plan say for us to do? We have an overall goal of providing a diversity of housing through a range of types and development patterns to expand the moderate income housing options available to existing and future residents. That is the overall goal. Um, we have two objectives to, to try to pursue that. First is ensure housing affordability targets are achievable using a range of strategies. And then the next one is provide the opportunity for affordable homeownership by offering a range of housing types for purchase, including attached dwellings. So objective one, um, which is the affordability targets with a range of strategies. So the strategies that are listed here, uh, promote affordable housing options, um, for a range of demographics and lifestyles. Um, I think that we're, we as a city have worked to do that a little bit more, um, with the passage of a lot of RM15 rezones recently, allowing for that attached housing, um, has helped, you know? Updating the zoning ordinance to, for the R210, for example, to allow, um, twin homes as opposed to just duplexes, um, that, that gets us in a direction. Let's see. Just, yeah, that's that next strategy. Ensure zoning of residential areas does not prohibit compatible types of housing. Continue to support ADUs in all residential zones. Uh, this was largely mandated last year. But we do continue to support, uh, detached accessory dwelling units. Uh, we'll have more to talk about that probably next, next time. Continue to support the use of density bonuses for affordable housing options. That could probably use some work in my professional opinion, um, the way we do res- so, um, if you remember our RM15 zone, all of our RM zones start with a, include a number. So it's RM10, 15, um, 20 and 25. And, but all of the base densities of that are three units less. So in RM15, you don't get 15 units per acre. You get 12 units per acre as a, as, as a, as a base. And then there is an incent, incentive density bonus where you have to meet a very huge slew of items, which a lot of it is the cost pro, the, I don't think it's as lucrative to get three additional units per acre and require what's in that incentive, incentive, but incentive bonus. For example, the one that really trips people up is to get the three units per acre. You have to have your units be at 60% of that AMI, um, de-restricted for I believe 50 years. Which everybody just says, nope, I'm not going to do that for three additional units per acre. So that's, that is usually just written off. So I think that's something that we could look at in the future. Maintain reduced residential parking requirements in the MCCD, mixed use, which doesn't exist anymore, and transit oriented development zones. Implement transit oriented development and/or mixed use zoning for properties in and around transit stations. Yeah, we've, we, we've still maintained most of that for the, for the most part. So now moving on to objective two, provide the opportunity for affordable homeownership by offering a range of housing types for purchase, including attached dwellings. Strategies here support, it, it pretty much says the exact same thing, just including townhomes, row homes, duplexes, which appeal to younger and older individuals. Um, you know, a- as hard as that was, Bullion is, is doing that. That's inserting some, um, attached housing, but it'll allow for, I got a call today from somebody asking, uh, who the developer was. They want to buy one. Um, it's, it's rough out there for people trying to buy houses. So they're, they're chomping at the bit.
And I have also had phone calls on the Bullion.
Yeah.
Fit friends that have said, I want to buy in.
Yes.
Because they want to sell their house.
Yes.
And move into something smaller.
Exactly. And then, um, review zoning ordinances and make modifications where necessary to allow housing types and setbacks and all that fun stuff, uh, to help encourage additional housing i- in those zones. So, um, that's kind of why you guys, uh, um, authorize the senior planner. That's going to be stuff that I'm going to be continuing to do as we move forward is looking at those. So really that's what I have. I'm happy to talk about anything. I have a copy of the general, of the, of that element of the general plan. So if you guys have questions, comments, happy to talk about it.
Can we get, um, the slides from this?
Of course.
Okay. And then also I know you just talked a little bit about like, I think it was like the comparison of what the AMIs would look like for developers and how that, can we see that like on a slide?
The incentive.
The incentives.
Yeah.
In, in those different areas compared to the numbers that.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll create a PDF.
Yeah.
And I'll send it over to Jennifer Kennedy.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful.
Yeah.
To see that and.
It, it doesn't, I'm sure it actually does explicitly state that you have to meet all three, right? Oh, yeah. Um, so when you look at that, it's not just you pick one item.
Right.
From each table, you address every single thing in each column, just when you read it, because it's a long list.
Right.
It's one column. So the first column in the table is for one extra unit and you do everything in that column. And the second one is for two extra and the third is for three extra. And they just get more and more difficult as you go.
That's per acreage, right?
It's, yeah, it's per, one unit per acre. So you're, you start at 12. If you want to get 13, you do everything in column one. And, and in column one, it'll have, it'll have better architectural materials. It'll have more amenities. It'll have et cetera, et cetera. And the final one is always that affordable housing component. And that one just gets harder to meet the further you go up. So the one Zach told you about is 60% of them at, or
60%.
60% at less than, yeah. And, and that's just hard for them to do. And it's on top of the architectural stuff and the better amenities and the more landscaping and all of it too. So they always just kind of shrug that off, or they have to date. But that's how, when you see the table, just keep that in mind. It's everything in whichever column you're trying to get to.
And I know that they addressed this a little bit during the legislative session, but I know DWS and, and who collects this data is looking at how they're going to collect it for the future. Is this something that we're going to have to address every year? Or is this the plan moving forward or next year is it going to change? Cause I'm sure those numbers will change.
I, I don't anticipate that you as a, as a council will have to address it every year. We have been doing that since, um, SB 34 went into effect. Jared has been, has been doing the, um, yearly updates, um, with the less than stellar, um, data stuff that we had to provide.
Yeah.
So, um,
Cause I think they were going to reformat.
They are going to redo that. I haven't seen what that looks like yet.
Okay.
So I don't know, but I don't think you as a council will see it. You, they might have us report on it. And if you guys are interested in a report on it, we're happy to do that. Because it, it, little bit of a spoiler, um, as part of House Bill 462, we're going to have to have implementation timeframes on, on this next thing. Right now we just have nice goals that we want to meet. Right now, we just have nice goals that we want to meet. But the state is mandating that we have a five-year implementation strategy for each of the four, six items that we have to choose from by the state. So that will kind of, we'll discuss in the next time when we go over the House bill a little bit more. But that's kind of a little bit of a spoiler, so.
Thank you, Zach.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you. So this was great. This is really the why, right? Setting up sort of the base.
Yeah, this, this is what, I'm hoping that you guys read through this so you understand where we're coming from and what we're doing, or what we've had on the books so far and how that's going to change in future discussions. So please hold on to your, onto your general plan elements and that way we can talk about them more. So.
Thank you.
Yes, and I'll send the slides to Ms. Kennedy and all that.
Well, thank you both. We really appreciate it and we look forward to seeing you next time for sure.
Awesome.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
All right, last up, we have Brenda, a discussion on fiscal year 2021, 2022 budget amendment.
You're fine. Okay, this is the last budget amendment for the year unless something tragic happens or spectacular happens, and then we need to do another one. So this is number four. So I got one a quarter. It's just a few cleanup things just to make sure that we have enough money in a few departments to make it through the end of the year. The first one is mostly related to salaries. And to fund this, I'm going to increase the sales tax budget by $103,500, which we should meet probably the budget. I still have four, five months to collect, and so we will meet that well above. Even though I don't think it can continue at its double-digit increase, I only plan for a 1% increase. So we're going to be good. So the first thing is the fire department. It needs a little more in its salaries and benefits. We approved the Juneteenth holiday. All of the firefighters get paid for holidays in lieu, which means they get extra money. So we are going to need to increase their budget to cover that. The police department does the same thing, but he has had a few vacancies throughout the year that are going to cover the, the cost of paying all of the police officers eight hours of in lieu holiday. And then next year, their in-laws will go back to the normal amount because they're calculated on the total number of holidays that we got. This year got an extra one. And then he's also had a couple open positions in the fire department, not as many as the police. But they've been using overtime to cover those shifts. So I'm going to raise his salaries and benefits up by $75,000 to get him through the end of the year. So he doesn't have to short shift any of his, any of his, yeah, run short on any of his shifts. The recorder's office halfway through the year, as COVID calmed down, we hired a second part-time person to do passports. They, so we have one that works in the morning, one that works in the afternoon, doubled the amount of passports we can process. We actually do make a profit on processing passports. And so we just need to raise their part-time salaries to cover that. When we get to the new city hall, we may actually go to four people and double it again. So we're still thinking about that. We'll have more space. And then I had a small math error in the human resources department on their insurance. It's just a matter of a person being on two-party as opposed to family. But when you only have three people in a budget, that pretty much wipes out any extra you might have planned. So that's why that is in there. So then the last thing is the stormwater fund. As part of our ARPA funding, we have you agreed to send a million dollars to the stormwater fund to work on infrastructure projects. And so this is just the budget opening so that they can receive that money and put it into projects. They have finished the projects for the year, so this will just increase their cash balance for the end of the year. And it, it is reflected in the budget that I just gave you for 2023. Their beginning balance now does reflect this million dollars in there. And it made their fund balance, their unassigned fund balance look much better. And it will allow next year's project to go on without any hiccups or running out of cash or anything like that. So that's all that's in that next budget opening. Do you guys have any questions or comments? Everybody's operations budgets, I looked through them, they all look good. If they are over budget in line, they have money in some other line to cover it. So we are, the rest of it's looking really good.
Any questions? All right, thank you, Brenda.
Thank you.
Okay, then that takes us to the end of our agenda. There are no objections. We will adjourn till council meeting at 6:30.
I would like to make an announcement.
Yes, please.
I know we don't have it listed, but we used to have announcements at the end. So anyway, I would like to invite the council and host a barbecue up at my cabin. So I would like to, like you to consider the 16th or the 23rd of July. And whichever one, you know, most people can attend. And, and Jennifer will send something out and we'll see what we can do. It's been a long time since I've been able to do that because of COVID. So it'd be really nice if we could do it.
Thank you, Diane.
So write down 16th or the 23rd and we'll see which works.
Excellent, thank you. All right, and with that, if there are no objections, do you have an announcement? Gary looked anxious, no? No, Gary.
Just checking with you.
No.
Want to make sure he's awake over there.
We are adjourned before you get us in trouble. Adjourned.